I know I have pizza, but so do you.
Yeah, I know. Somebody set it up that way.
Big fan. We're going to call the Council on Redevelopment Agency meeting back to order. We've previously convened downstairs as part of the employee award ceremony. So we'll proceed to the beginning of our agenda. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our real property negotiator regarding the parcel number that's listed in our closed session agenda and directions only were provided to our negotiator in that session. All right, we'll now proceed to item 1A, which is presentation by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the city council. This is an important opportunity for a public forum, although we would note that under state law, we're prohibited at the council from taking up any issues that are brought up under item 1A. We do ask that anyone wishing to speak under this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the door and to turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the chance to be heard, and to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. When we get to our regular agenda items, we do ask that the cards be turned in prior to the conclusion of the staff report on that item. Once the council discussion and questions and the public testimony have begun, we don't take any additional cards. And so if you're intending to speak on an item that's on our agenda later this evening, the earlier the better for the card, but certainly by the conclusion of the staff report. So with that, we have -- oh, we also recognize for some folks speaking in public and on television before hundreds of thousands of people can induce some nerves, and so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, and we try to maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers. So with that, we have a couple of requests to speak up under item 1A, and the first is by JB Bisharian. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Matt, could you begin by leading the counseling guests and our staff in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
Thank you.
Knock, knock. Gentlemen of the council, mayor, I am here once again to speak about our bright postal antics. There has been some movement, not much, but an improvement at least, temporary, in that I received a response, which I believe you have in front of you, from the postal district supervisor, and she took under advisement hours of operation inconsistencies and so forth. They have made changes. The regular clerk that used to be there is now opening up in the morning, so they're not missing up to two hours' worth of customers by not opening until 10:00 when they're supposed to open at 8:30, and still leave at noon. That's an improvement. I've had to have them bring out someone to open the place up on a Saturday to get my mail out, and I was there at 3:30, and it's not supposed to close till 4:00. But I do request, I thank you for all of your efforts. I'm certain that everything that you've done has been a help, but I do have the feeling that we're in a blink contest here, and who blinks first is going to not win. I would like to see this opened. There are a lot of people that depend on that post office, and if we keep up the effort and are the squeaky wheel, perhaps we'll prevail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bisharian. Bill Lowell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor William Lowell of West Sacramento for the record, and I just wanted to advise the folks that do depend on public transportation, and probably you or one of the other board members, on March 22nd, next Monday, over at the Rancho Cordova City Hall, regional transit's going to have their second and final meeting regarding those major changes, which will be cutbacks, apparently to run no buses later than 8:00 p.m. and/or light rail, and no weekend or holiday service. That's what we're up against unless they get major infusion of funding. And I was wondering if with the new soccer team coming in, that's going to create increased traffic, and so that gives another argument for a Southport-South Sacramento Bridge. And I was, and I found it interesting, my questionnaire for the census, the little slip says, "Fill it out and mail it back today," but the first two questions ask you about your situation as of April 1st. So I don't see how you can send it back until April 1st, because you can't always predict things like this. I mean, some families will have kids, some families will have a member pass on, or somebody will move in or move out, and I called them up, and I couldn't get anything out of them. And so, and if we're lucky, maybe our next AT&amp;T phone book will have our congressman's phone number in there, like it should have. But, yeah, I could relate to my previous speaker's post office situation, where I went to high school up there in Olivhurst. They have, apparently, they're going to close down a major post office in that area that's the biggest employer in that area, and it makes me, disappoints me. I sometimes wonder, we have such a trouble getting people to sort mail over here at our post office, maybe we should see if we can reallocate some of that mail sorting up there, because I know they did something down in Stockton to prevent a post office closing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. And Ben Davis, Jr.?
Council member, I'm Ben Davis, Jr. Thank you for the opportunity to address you again. As you recall, last time I spoke before you, I was expressing concern over the fact that I had come to the council six, seven, eight months prior, asking for permission to apply for assistance by my family home, and I was told shortly thereafter that it looked likely I would be able to reapply earlier than normal, but they were going to, city staff was going to check and see whether or not the program was still funded, so I didn't waste my time. It took six, seven, eight months to look into that, and I was informed seven days after we ran out of funds that I could reapply. The reason I'm bringing it back to your attention is I also mentioned at that meeting that the same city staff told me that we missed getting funded this year by less than 1%. I don't know if that means 1/10th of 1%, 1/100th of 1%, but less than 1% is smaller than, knowing something of those types of studies, it's a very, very small amount, in fact, a miniscule amount. And I mentioned that I wanted to look into it to make sure that, in fact, it was correct. I made that fact immediately known to your staff the next day, and I'm trying to get the information at this time. Your staff has expressed some willingness to help me with that. I want to be very clear about it at this time, and the reason I come to the meeting today is I want to ask you formally for all the information that the city gave to State Home that was used to determine that we missed by less than 1% funding this year. I will use that and try to get information on other cities that qualified to compare them and see whether or not this was done arbitrarily or in something that I would consider a fair fashion. I don't consider myself a conspiracy theorist. That seems like a legitimate question to me, considering that it was less than 1% that we missed by. So I would like this also as expediently as possible, given I just waited eight months, maybe it was seven or six, I'm not sure, to be told that I could apply for this loan now that funding is gone. I don't want to wait another eight months for this information. I expected, and I would hope that you would encourage your staff to give this to me in an expedient manner. It should be something that's readily available to your staff. It shouldn't be something that takes a lot of digging. Included in that information, I would like all correspondence from the state. For example, whatever it was that was told us that we missed by only 1%, and I want you to consider this, if Target or any of the corporations that have moved into town had come to you for assistance and found out that they had missed getting your approval by 1% for some reason or another, you would bend over backwards to explain it and make sure it was correct, and try to alleviate it if it wasn't. There are a lot of people, a lot of residents of West Sacramento that are not going to be funded this year, whereas they were last year for first-time homebuyers because of this move, and I think it warrants scrutiny. So I hope that I can get that information to you expediently. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And Dale Jake Baines?
I'm Dale Jake Baines. Here on behalf of actually my father. He owns property on Evergreen Avenue, 3230, and we filed a police report earlier this year because it continues to be vandalized. It's a lot, and he has a chain-link fence around it and keeps it well-maintained. About a year ago, two years ago, we filed the police report, and again, last year we did, and this is the third incident in three years. So what's happening is that we're having the chain-link fence being broken down either through a car, because it doesn't look like it's actually humanly done. And then vagrants tend to set up, you know, housing there, temporary housing, and this is, becomes obviously an insurance issue for my father and the cost of continually repairing the property. This year, we spoke with Officer Bissad, and he had recommended that we come to city council to ask if we can have increased patrol, if there's any other services the city of West Sacramento offers, and I do have pictures also to show the damage that continues to be done.
All right, thank you. I think, I don't think you were here earlier, but we don't, we actually can't take up items that are brought to us under this item.
Okay.
The state law, and it's, the law exists to protect the public so that anything that we're going to discuss or take action on at city council is publicly noticed in advance. So this is an important time for a public forum, and any of the issues that get raised, we refer to the city manager. But sometimes folks come in, it's their first meeting, and they don't get any response or discussion or action, and they're frustrated, but that's the reason. It's, there's, the state law prohibits us from doing that. But so it, so the comments are in, we'll get a report, we will get feedback from the city manager and the police department between now and our future meetings.
Okay, and so am I, should I be following up with somebody else? Is that my following? Oh, you'll follow up with me? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do we have her address and everything, Toby?
Yes, we do.
Okay, good.
All right, that is the only, the only request we have under item 1A, so we're going to proceed to item 1B, which is communications. Are there any reports or other council communications this evening? Mr. Kristof?
Yes, on Thursday, March 11th, really had some pretty good news on the West Safka issues, the JPA between the city of West Sacramento, RD 900 and 537. And as we reported about a month ago, we received a fairly large check. We have a little ceremony here, a little over $1 million, and I'm just real happy to report, we received another check of $895,000, which isn't as big as the million, but it's not a small change. That's a pretty good amount of money. So it's for monies that we have up fronted for levy repair projects, especially the project between the Tower Bridge and the Ice Street Bridge. And so the monies are now starting to roll. We're in, we finally have worked our way through the bureaucracy, and we're starting to be paid back for some of the monies that the community has up fronted for flood protection, and we will take those dollars and we will roll them right back into other flood protection projects that we're doing. We've got eight reaches that we would like to accomplish in a certain amount of time, and we've completed one, and now we're working on two others. And so one of these days, we'll get it all done. But I thought that was pretty good news. And then I did attend a Safka meeting and for sanitation on last Wednesday or Thursday, I guess it was Tuesday. I can't remember the date now. But really, nothing to report as far as our section was going, so meeting didn't really last a long time, but at the same time, there was really no matters of significance report back.
Thank you, Mr. Kristof. Other reports? Preschool? Did you have an event on Thursday?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to inform the council that tomorrow evening, we are having a fundraiser for the universal preschool system program that we have here in West Sacramento, and so I think the executive director has been aggressively marketing the event and wants to make sure that the invitation is extended to anybody who is interested in supporting the universal preschool program here in West Sacramento. And you can certainly contact Justine Jimenez here at the city hall, or Assistant City Manager Carol Richardson regarding the event, but wants to also make sure that the council is aware and the invitations are extended to the council as well.
Mr. Mayor, I've just received an email from our director that on Channel 13 tonight, there's going to be a short segment on our program highlighting one of the preschools and also announcing the event. If people are interested in tuning into that, 10 o'clock tonight.
Very good. I think at the same time, Channel 10 will have a story on the census that they just shot downstairs, and no matter what the story says, we are not sending police officers to your neighborhood to arrest you if you don't fill out your census form. We're not the census cops, although it would be to the advantage of the whole community, millions of dollars of advantage of worth in terms of roads and health and schools and parks and housing and other funding sources if everyone does get their census form in as quickly as possible, I think completely as possible, and adopts as many children as possible by April 1st for the date that Mr. Lowell has described. All right, I think, to, the Board of Directors of SECAHOG is going to, meets tomorrow, but the key items that are proceeding there are our response to the potential for a federal stimulus two. I just think I described this in broad, general terms at the last council meeting, and it's, it doesn't look any more or less likely today than it did two weeks ago that the Congress will agree, because they haven't done any work on this because of healthcare. But there's still, are the two competing stimulus two packages from the House and from the Senate. The House one is huge and lots of money for local infrastructure. The Senate bill is tiny and has virtually nothing. We have, we're preparing, and our staff in public planning in both Public Works and Community Development have been working on projects to be submitted as part of the regional screening and selection process. And just so the council's aware of what I think we have in the mix, if I recall, there's five projects, Ice Street Bridge railing and ADA access work, three miles of Class 1 bike pathway work along the Clarksburg Branch Trail and the bridge, so the remainder of the, of the, of the project that we already have the, that we, that we won the last regional competition for. The South River Road, Barks Canal Bridge and the Village Park, Village Parkway Extension projects, that's the largest of the proposals that we have, and that's a $30 million project. Additional work on Tower Bridge Gateway and West Capital, the West Capital Extension and Streetscape Improvements Phase Two are the major ones that we have in the hopper. So at SECAHOG, we're trying to figure out how to program projects fast in the event, although it looks less likely today, but in the event that the Congress acts, they're very likely to demand that we have whatever money is out there obligated in some way by, let's just say, the primary election, guessing based on the, on the time range, you know, within, within a very short period of time, maybe 90 days. And that doesn't allow us to allot a time to set local, regional, statewide, and national allocation priorities, and then actually go through and do the contract of board and bidding and everything else in that timeframe. So if it happens, it's going to be extremely fast, and so we're trying to do as much of the advanced work as possible for that to proceed. And I mean, the big, I will tell you, the fight that I'm having inside SECAHOG right now is we have jurisdictions that are overestimating their capacity to deliver projects fast. So I think Maureen on our staff has told SECAHOG that we have, all of those projects that we have can be, we can get to contract by, you know, within 90 to 120 days, or, for the big gigantic project, within, within a half a year. But there are jurisdictions that are, that are promising that they can deliver projects much, much faster, and there are jurisdictions who are traditionally late in delivering the projects that they have had. You know, we, we'll give them money at the regional level for one project and give them three years to finish it, and three years later, they're not even halfway done. But they're telling us that if this money comes forward, they could deliver eight projects in 90 days. It's not really credible, so we're trying to make sure that, that, by doing this in advance, that we don't prejudice against the jurisdictions like ours that are, that are being honest and realistic about what is, what is actually deliverable within such a short timeframe, given the environmental and contracting rules. So that's the, I mean, there's not some major battle like with I-5, I-113 as there has been in the past, or something like that. It's really about the, sort of the technical rules about, about what projects get through the screening criteria, but since I'm still the transportation committee, I think we'll be okay, but that's, that's the screening fight that's likely to emerge soon. I don't know if, I haven't seen the list. SECAHOG is sponsoring an anniversary celebration and summit on April 2nd for the blueprint. It's the fifth year anniversary of the blueprint, and we expect both in terms of the region-wide participation from all the cities and counties, we expect some fairly high-level participation from the key federal agencies that have taken the blueprint and made it part of the president's major livability and sustainable communities initiatives. And so we, you know, we expect some folks within the cabinet agencies to be here for that session, and the event is completely and totally sold out, but if there are elected officials or planning commissioners in our city that are still interested in attending, definitely, you can sign up, you'll get a note back saying that it's full, but that you're on a waiting list, and, but we've, but we've already pre-cleared you to get through the waiting list to make sure that you're, that you're, that you are in the room, because it should be, promises to be a good event, and we'll want to put on, both in terms of for ourselves, some good learning and planning and strategizing, but also put on a good show for the federal agencies that are present, who are making key decisions on things like our streetcar funding. Then the board of the Yolo County Transportation District met last week, and our major issues are budget-related, in part, our own direct budget because of the, of the massive cutbacks in, from the state. At the meeting, our executive director was reporting on the state legislative package that would have restored a significant part of the state's transit assistance funding, not all of it, but it would restore a significant portion of it into the future, and so he was feeling more optimistic about our own budget. We were meeting, I think, an hour or two after the, oh, no, we were meeting during the Regional Transit District Board meeting as well, and they were, you know, quite frankly, savaging their transit services left and right, and so that has huge impacts for us because a lot of what we do, particularly for our residents, is connect people through Yolo bus to an RT bus, and if that bus no longer exists at the other end of the Yolo bus, it's a big problem for our residents that are trying to get somewhere. And we can't, obviously can't run a Yolo bus to every location, every key location in Sacramento County or RT service areas. So their service cuts have the potential to have big impacts for our residents and for our employers, who depend on, whose employees depend on them as well. They're obviously not going to be running the Rivercat Shuttle this year, so this is, that's one of the smaller issues that we have to resolve, but it's a real one. So we have some major challenges on the transit side that have actually gotten worse since the board meeting because the governor has said he's vetoing that restoration, and so that will mean $0 for state transit assistance again, and that's a huge hit to, and the governor's still insisting on the gas tax swap that would zero out the other money for transit, the local money for transit. So it's a, it's a big problem all around. What we have asked Yolo bus to do is to come and spend a little time with, with our Economic Development Advisory Commission. EDAC has the jurisdiction among our commissions for transportation and transit. They're not that up to speed on these issues, but what we have done up to this point with the cuts that have occurred is to make them around the margin. I think I reported previously, we said, "Okay, here's a bus that's only picking up five people on it along its entire route, maybe we shouldn't be running that one anymore." We can't, we only want to do that to a certain extent because particularly of things that we're doing in the city around our, our growth patterns, where we're saying to folks, "Don't buy, you know, don't have only one car per household. We're not going to require the developer builds you three parking spaces and all that because we're going to, we're going to make the transit available." As those neighborhoods start to fill in, if we have this test where we say there has to be, you know, 12 people on the bus, and we cancel that route, then we're not delivering on the promises that we made to those residents. And so we've got that challenge, and then we have residents who need, depend on, we have transit-dependent riders who depend on that service for medical appointments and jury duty and getting to work and, and childcare and everything else. And so we're trying, what we're asking Eric and others from the Yolo bus to do is to spend some time with EDAC, starting to think more strategically about what our policy approach to transit service reductions ought to be, so that we're doing it a way that, that matches up with our other policy objectives and with the real needs of the community, and not just like some sort of temporary marginal change, because it looks like the transit cuts are going to be, you know, around for a while at this, at this particular, at this rate. Okay, so that's it on reports. Nobody else has something more optimistic they can report on? We should have done your, your $800,000 check last. Okay, once he has appointments with boards and commissions, we have none of those this evening, so we'll proceed, and we've already disposed of item two, which was the annual employee and team of the year ceremony. So we'll proceed to our consent agenda items three through 10. We have enough requests to speak on item four that I would like to remove that from the consent agenda and take it up separately. Are there any other items on consent that any member wishes to remove, or any item for separate question or comment? Nine? All right, and we have a request for public comment on item six, so we'll proceed first to item six, which is consideration of Resolution 10-19, initiating annual proceedings under the Storm Drain Maintenance Act of 1937. We have a request for comment by Mr. Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor William Lowell, again for the record. I'm noting that it seems to say or imply that things are all okay, but since, since that low spot was repaired just south of 15th Street on Pennsylvania that low spot was repaired just south of 15th Street on Pennsylvania Avenue, now the low spot is pretty much in front of my house, and, because we don't have, we don't have the storm drains down that section of Pennsylvania Avenue, so, again, I think we should seriously consider tapping into the sewer lines with the, with mini drains with a trap, a heavy-duty plastic trap, so that the odor wouldn't get back up, and between the rain and the, and the winter and the little water that comes off the sidewalk and whatnot, I think, I think that would keep the odors out and it should save money, but I, I think we should do, do something about that, and I still think we ought to do something about those two storm drains over at 15th and Alabama that's just hooked up to one another, and when it really rains heavy, why, it really floods the curves there, and we need one of those hooked up to Jefferson Boulevard. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lowell. I know Ms. Hayden is here, but this item is actually not about specific storm drain services, it's just about, it's the first step in the process necessary to sustain the regular assessments citywide that are required in order to support storm drain maintenance everywhere, except for Rayleigh's Landing, I think is the, if I remember correctly, so. So I don't, we probably don't need additional clarification on that issue from, from Ms. Hayden, maybe at a different time from, from Public Works. All right, item nine then is consideration of a word of contract for construction of the Transit Center to C and C Construction. Mr. Johansson?
Maureen, the only question I have on this is, and we've, we've come across this before, whenever we're going out and bidding city projects to try to access the local businesses to try and see if we can get them to work, and I know in this there were no bids from local firms, was that, do you have a reason why that is, is it just no capability in West Sacramento for this job, or?
There, there weren't any bidders that submitted bids that are based in, the, the prime bidder is based in West Sacramento. We do have some local involvement, we had previously contracted with Wallace Cool and Associates to provide some of the geotechnical support work for this project, but when we advertise for bids, we put it through the typical construction advertising and networking sources, and we advertise in the local paper, and, and I think this was advertised in the B as well, yeah. So, you know, the, the kind of response we get is based on the contractor interest, you know, who's looking for what kind of work, and the response level may depend on the nature of the work, we'll get local firms depending on the size of the bid, sometimes projects are too big for smaller firms or too small for bigger firms.
Yeah, I know you, you've been doing a good job at reaching out to the community, and also I, I think working with the chamber as well to get the word out on, you know, how to apply for contracts, but it was just, I, I just wanted to make sure that, again, that we're making all effort to include local businesses in these bids.
Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, Maureen, hi. Yeah, one of, that was one of the questions I had, because we have some local surveying firms that, you know, I think that it would, to let them know that these bids are coming up, I mean, even, even if it is local, let them know, and then Wallace Cool is a great example, I mean, they need to know, they do so many environmental services and things like that. But one of the other questions I have is the 15% contingency.
Yes.
Normally, we have about an 8% or 10% or something, why so high? I mean, to me, that is a, an avenue for outside bidding firms to game the system.
You know, we, we, we're conscious about the amount of the contingency in this contract, and made note of that in the staff report, that our reasons for having a somewhat larger-than-typical here were because this is the last project in a series of five that have taken place in the Civic Center. We anticipate that there's going to be some integration problems, so, you know, ma- making sure that the, the grade or the utility from one of the Civic Center projects matches up with what we're installing in Merkley Avenue. Since this is the, the last bit, we have to pick up the, all the loose ends. That's the primary reason for that.
So, so Maureen, in 45 days, when the Federal Transit Administration gives us $25 million, or $24,999,000, just in time for the State to City address, for the streetcar project?
Yeah.
Will we already be so far along with this project that we won't be able to integrate those?
No, we've planned ahead for streetcar, you know, there, there is necessarily going to be some rebuilding and adjustment to accommodate streetcar when we get that money. But the things that we have done in all of these projects to make way for streetcar is make sure that we didn't place any utilities within the planned streetcar route, so that we're not going to have to relocate underground stuff. We have tried to prevent placing obstacles, and we've tried to reserve room for things, but what, because we really can't, we haven't been able to count 100%, we don't have the check in hand yet, we are moving ahead with some improvements that would have to get adjusted.
As part of this project?
Trees landscaping, paving on the surface, you know, we don't want to leave a full lane of traffic out of use if we were not to pave the lane that eventually would accommodate streetcar track.
But those are things we're doing for the other projects, I mean, I meant specifically for the Transit Center piece.
Transit Center, there's not big adjustments, the anticipated stop location for streetcar is actually within the median on West Capitol Avenue, so what we have done to integrate with Transit Center is provide the streetlight at Merkley and West Capitol and improve the, the pedestrian crosswalks, and then we'll also have waiting areas and some informational signage that will benefit streetcar passengers as well, but there's not any major physical improvements that could have at Transit Center.
Okay, great.
Okay.
And we had a request for public comment on this from Mr. Lowell.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, William Lowell, again in West Sacramento, and I'm wondering, after this project is completed, will we have either modified shelters or new shelters that will be, have better ventilation in them so that they don't get so hot during the summertime, and also will the no-smoking policy kick in once these are built? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowell. Ms. Pascoe?
I'm going to love the shelters at the new Transit Center, because in addition to a lot of seating and good shelters, we have glass panels with some art etched on them.
Ms. Pascoe?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. Yes, great shelters at the Transit Center, in addition, some additional shade facilities, so in addition to the roofed shelter and seating area, there'll be additional seating with trellises and, and some vine, climbing vines on it, so provide a nice shade area. And then in addition, we've also got some distinctive new shelters going up associated with the West Cap Streetscape Project, and you can get a sneak peek at them down the street at Tower Court, I'm excited about that, yeah.
And if it's that hot, there's also frozen yogurt right at the, right at Blue Bird's Yogurt next to City Hall.
Yeah, and there was another question?
About the no-smoking policy.
I'm not sure of the date on, that takes effect, I'd have to defer to management's. I'll get back to you.
Okay, all right. Okay, then that's it on the consent agenda, is there a motion on the consent agenda minus item four? It's going to be by Mr. Johansson, and seconded by Mr. Beers. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor please say aye, aye, and opposed or none, the motion carries, consent agenda is adopted unanimously. Item four is consideration of grant applications for Google Fiber for Communities Program and National Endowment for the Arts Mayor's Institute on City Design Program. Mr. Laurel?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just briefly on these couple of programs. This item seeks your approval to turn in two applications, one is for a grant program through the Mayor's Institute on City Design, it's a National Endowment for the Arts Program. The other is a nomination of this, of the city for the Google Fiber for Communities Program. Both of these programs were brought to our attention by, by the mayor, and, and we are pursuing them. For a couple of different initiatives, the Mayor's Institute on City Design Program would fund a art program at the new community center across the street. It's a series of art projects that involve the citizens, and will produce a couple of products out of it that are designed to coincide with the, with the 25th anniversary of the Mayor's Institute on Community Design. The Google Fiber for Communities Program, I understand you have quite a few speaker requests on that, there's a, quite a bit of public support for this initiative. Basically, it's a, Google, the, the internet company, is building and testing fiber optic networks that will provide ultra-high-speed internet to, to consumers, both residents and businesses. They're picking between, they haven't actually said how many jurisdictions, but the nomination process essentially entails us putting together facts about the city, about the number of poles and the existing infrastructure we have on the ground, so they can make an assessment of the ability of Google to come in and build that network, both from a cost and timing standpoint. Concurrent to that, there's a citizen nomination process, and citizens or community groups are able to go online on Google's website, fill out a nomination for the city, and it's really more of a survey about their existing service and how they would use this fiber-optic network if it were provided. So we do have a very good organized citizen group that consists of multiple organizations and individuals. Just to name a couple, we have the Brighton-Broder Community Action Network that's been involved. Also, a, a group of just citizens have, have been getting together fairly regularly since this came out to discuss the outreach effort, so there's a website, and, and a lot of good outreach efforts going on to get the word out, to get the nominations in. So if you have any questions about either program, I'm happy to take those, otherwise we can, speakers.
Other questions for Savit this time? Mr. Laurel? All right, we have a few requests to speak on item four, the first is by Thomas Ampsler. Who got all dressed up for us? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm part of the Google Fiber for Communities Project, have initially taken the lead to bring this project here to West Sacramento, because I think it's a great opportunity. And we have been working closely with the city already, and I thank for that, that the city fills out their application, and we are mobilizing the residents in West Sacramento to fill in the nominations for our city. And just to outline some of the benefits, in short, the Google is trying to choose one city this year, they're looking for a city of the size between 50,000 and 500,000 residents, and they will provide fiber optics to their house, which in the West Sacramento setting would mean that they would invest about $750 million to put this infrastructure in place, and the direct benefits that would come out of such a project to West Sacramento would mean we would attract more high-tech businesses, more residents would choose to come to West Sacramento, as other projects similar size, referencing the Google, the fiber ring down in Palo Alto, which had a great impact on that community and similar settings in the US. Also, potentially through the, the speed that we would get, it would help our educational setting, that we could smooth some of the education material online, so just the high school areas, and thus we could potentially reduce the classroom size, would benefit some of our children that are there, where the classes are very impacted. In addition, it would increase real estate value for every resident here if we had such a setup, because there would be more requests for people to move here. And also, when Google would choose to launch this project here, it potentially more, create more jobs because of, you know, the potential $750 million investment. And some of the other benefits we could directly get is, if you could imagine from a use case, that if I would try to transfer files, and it would take a long time to get a file to one of my coworkers, if I would telecommute, you know, transportation impact we have right now. Right now, if I would have to trans, transfer a 500 megabyte file, it would take about one and a half hours, if you had Google Fiber, it would take three seconds. So usually, I don't have to transport the file, with less driving, less impact on the streets and so forth.
Thank you. And Carlos Mascherano?
Mayor, Councilmembers, Carlos Mascherano from West Sacramento, Happy St. Patrick's Day, thank you for letting me speak on this item. Just wanted to follow up on what Thomas had said, I'm also a volunteer for the West Sacramento for Google Fiber. Thomas did a good job laying out some of the benefits, he's mentioned the Palo Alto case, on that case specifically, Josh Wallace, who handles the city's fiber network, indicated that he could name at least a half dozen companies that have moved to Palo Alto just to be on the city's fiber ring. He also indicated that many local Palo Alto businesses consider the city's infrastructure a major asset in the city, and one of the businesses there, Jazz Pharmaceuticals, said that the fiber ring allowed their company to expand within Palo Alto rather than moving to a larger campus elsewhere. By plugging into the city's network, they were able to connect a new building to the firm's existing server at the high speeds that fiber allows. The other benefit that the fiber system would bring is improved internet reliability and bandwidth. Currently, most people in, in the city use DSL dial-up or, or cable. Fiber optic provides probably one of the most stable networks in which to access the internet. It would also allow businesses to deploy more bandwidth-intensive solutions like videoconferencing and create other businesses, opportunities for existing businesses and track new businesses. The, I think the other important issue to consider as well is that laying fiber to the home here in West Sacramento would help bridge the digital divide that affects students, residents and others in and around the area, so I, I think that's a, that's a key benefit. You have a vibrant volunteer base here within the community to try to generate community support, which is a key component to the application for the Google project. We would love to collaborate more closely with the city. Councilmember Johansson has been a participant and has helped greatly with the project. If we could get the city's support to send out maybe email blasts or include the project in the, in this, any city newsletters, that would be extremely helpful, so that we could generate more support on our website, on the Facebook page, which some of the members might be familiar with, and also on our Google Groups site, so we look forward to working with you and find more opportunities to collaborate. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Carlos.
One question I have, and that is, since Google is really going to expand into one city within those parameters, within the 50,000, 500,000, what are our chances, really? I mean, it certainly would seem like many, many communities will be vying for the Google services, I mean, and, you know, we're one of 500 and something cities, or 600 and something cities now.
That's a great question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
I think our, and as good as the, I think that there are, we have here in West Sacramento, policymakers that might be interested in, or, or opportunity for this type of, type of experience, and that's, that's, and the UCDA Medical Center, that have basically that were at the center of, and I think that there are, I think that, I think that is, it is, it is, there are.
Sure.
There's dozens of cities in California that are applying, and there's hundreds of cities that are applying, so that's why it's important to have the application.
Thank you.
And Jim Becherin?
Testing one. Well, I'm fairly new to this project, I'm not familiar with all the details yet, but I'll catch up. But this community, I believe, has something to offer, it's called location, location, location. We are right across the river from the state capitol. There are a lot of businesses, and there are a lot of workers that commute daily across the river, both physically and informationally. We are ideal. We have two hidden assets. One is our river, which we're working on and developing, and the other would be this network. If we're this close, it would be, it would be a crime if we didn't get selected. We have a lot to offer, and we're growing, we're picking ourselves up by our own bootstraps as we should. I think it's a good idea, and I hope that our schools are well able to take care of this. Just because the network is there doesn't mean they'll have the funding for the equipment needed to access it fully, but I do hope it goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becherin.
Good evening, Council members. My name is Jim Brewer, and I'm representing BB Can this evening, as well as myself, on the Google project. You've already heard several of the merits of the project and our application, and I can speak from having talked to many of the members of the BB Can group, and this is supported, not universal, but there is a majority of support for this particular kind of project. We do have assets that are good for us, as opposed to a different city such as Elk Grove or someone else, is that we also have the fiber already here. It comes right through our town. In fact, it's the same fiber cables that Google uses already. So it's all they have to do is drill a hole, or do whatever they do, and they're there. They're already tapped in. Where Elk Grove, they'd have to dig another trench or something. So we already have a big plus on that. We also have, because of our location, with the levees, we're also very encapsulated, so we can be a very good test case for them. And the other part that comes to mind, not so much as an asset, but just as the need of the community. We have, as you know, in the northern part of West Sacramento, a underserved community. This will help them, not only from the people that are school age and need to go to school and get the virtual classrooms, that will be possible, but also the other community members who have a cultural difference. And it's easier then for them to get on virtual networks and see videos of someone teaching them everyday English while they're sending it home. So there's a lot of uses that we already can identify, and I would challenge you, as the rest of the community, to think about things that we haven't seen yet. This is the equivalent of going to the broadband from a dial-up, only a hundred times more. It's a major difference, a major impact, and it would be something that a tourist coming here that didn't have it in their community and saw it in our community, that would be a point of envy, and it would be something they would go home and talk about. It is a very, very powerful community tool and asset. Thank you.
Mr. Brewer? All right, Mr. Laurel, anything further?
Actually, yes, just to respond to and add a couple of things. First, on the outreach, the city is participating, and we just posted today a link on our front page of our website, under the news you can use portion, that has a link to this application. So anyone can go on there and link to the Google site to start a nomination. Now on that, one thing that is important, having worked on the application, the city's nomination is very technical, it doesn't provide a lot of space for describing a lot of the merits of the project that you just heard about, and so that just reinforces the importance of residents, community groups going on there making the nominations to, so that Google and the reviewers of this can hear about all those different things, whereas we're limited on our application with how much we can say. So that's extremely important to get the word out, so that a lot of nominations are submitted.
All right, thank you, Mr. Laurel. Now return to the Council. Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, thanks, I'd like to thank Aaron for really helping with this. Done a good job at organizing the city in what limited times we have, and working with the outside groups. This is, I mean, there is a lot of competition, I understand that some cities have temporarily renamed their cities to Google, whatever, in order to try to get this. But, you know, something like this clearly would benefit West Sacramento in terms of its existing residents and businesses, but our ability to attract residents and businesses in the future. And, you know, for example, Los Rios is located right here, they've shown an interest in looking at this in terms of having remote classrooms, because of the budget situation. But a couple of things I wanted to mention, that there's an application deadline of March twenty-sixth.
That's correct.
So we're on a very short timeframe. If anybody's interested in providing the community support that we need, the website is www.googlewesac.org. So if you go to that website, there's, I think, links to the Facebook page, there's links to the application, it's a very short application. The other thing is that the Federal Trade, or the FTC, I think, is looking at gigabyte, expansion of gigabyte networks throughout the country as well, and which is this, a Google project is a gigabyte network. So even if we don't, aren't successful at this application, I think it's a good effort to see what kind of community support there is for this type of thing, for the city to go through the exercise of exactly what assets it has. So, you know, it's not, I don't think, a wasted effort if we don't get this, but there is this whole federal movement now to move toward gigabit ethernet that I would, you know, hope staff is keeping an eye on that, and maybe utilize some of the information that we've gathered at this point to get a jumpstart on that as well, to see what programs the federal government's going to be coming out with.
Other comments?
And we did, it was ten years ago, almost exactly, the Council made a decision to be part of the largest Northern California fiber optic system, and allow Sacramento to have it be torn up, and to put cable across the river, and I think at that time, Mr. Kristoff didn't own a computer.
No.
So, no, you have it, it's just not plugged in.
I don't know the password.
And that helped to connect in a direct way, because that fiber optic line, in addition to going right through Broderick and right through Bright, goes also to the Riverside Center, where many of our biotechnology companies and other industry leaders are. And we knew then that that would be a significant draw, to have access to that level of speed and capacity on the pipes for the internet. So that is a significant advantage that other communities don't have, because there's no point in getting high-speed, super-high-speed, just in your own community, if you then connect into a pipeline that is going at the same old speed, right? It's of no help to, except for, you know, if Mr. Ampsler is sending you a five hundred megabyte file, please don't send it to me. If he's sending you a five hundred megabit file, then it's helpful. But otherwise, for most of the stuff that we're all accessing in and out, putting in and out of the internet, it requires that the bigger pipe also be large enough to accommodate these same speeds, because the total speed that you're going to achieve is limited by the slowest link in that chain. So I think we do have an advantage in that respect. We're also in a good, we're in a better position than some, because we are seen as a, we're a prominent city that gets, you know, positive media attention and coverage, and positive governmental response from other agencies. Those are important to Google. We are an example of a community that has a digital divide, but it's not so overwhelming that you can't envision solving it. And we have a good land use mix that a lot of places don't have, and so if you want to demonstrate a case of a system that works in an industrial, a commercial, a retail, a goods movement, suburban, urban, contact, rural context, we're one of the few places that you can both get your arms around, but also represents the sort of diversity of place that you'd want to make, that you would want as one of your pilots. And despite the current economy, we're growing, and that's necessary for this kind of a project to be successful. We don't actually know anything about what Google's intentions are, right? So they're not answering questions. We have, I've convened, three weeks ago, a national meeting in DC of mayors, at the time, there were, I think, two hundred of us that had an interest in our cities and doing this, now there's two thousand cities that are in the same process. But we convened a meeting and asked Google to come, to have a conversation with us about, what do you really want? Don't we start time, you know, if there are things that you've already made decisions about? And they wouldn't come, not too surprisingly. So we invited some of the, sort of, the top industry analysts to come and help us reverse-engineer what Google's interests are, because this is not a philanthropic project for Google, right? They're not, Google is not figuring out, how do we make one place or four places, you know, better than they used to be? That's a corollary benefit, but they have real economic interests at stake, and so we asked some industry analysts to come meet with this group of a dozen mayors, to talk about what it was that they thought Google's interests were in this project, and what that might imply for selection criteria and screening criteria on Google's behalf. And I think the universal view is that Google's audience here is not the public, it's not state capitals, it's the federal, it is the federal government. And it's exactly this issue that was mentioned with respect to gigabit ethernet access, with respect to internet net neutrality, I mean, a whole range of issues that Google is trying to influence and push AT&amp;T, and the cable companies, and other telecommunications providers on, and has been unsuccessful to a large degree, but wants to prove that it can be done, and at the same time, use their proof point as a way to whip all of us into a frenzy, to say to the federal government, see, we all want this, the whole country is demanding this right away. And so that's Google's strategy, it's a very smart one, because they do have cities renaming themselves, and everyone bending over backwards to do this, even though, you know, it might be two or three communities out of thousands that go through the application process that are ultimately engaged. So it is important for us to think of, I think, the reason why we'd ask staff to look at this between last month and this month, is that we'd like to do this, for all the reasons that have been mentioned tonight, and more, because this, being the one selected community, in addition to all the actual benefits of the project, means that you, that we would be the focus of national and international attention, as the place to do everything, as innovation central. So it has gigantic benefits even beyond the technology itself. But we had to assess, you know, how much work is this going to be? Given that our chances are very low, even if the benefit's very high, how much of our resources at the staff level is this going to require to accomplish? And the answer is, not that much. You know, it turns out, not surprisingly, we actually do know how much cable is in the city, we do, we know how many poles there are. So the process of completing the application, I think, is what, you know, and the recommendation tonight, is that we can do this, without, you know, requiring massive distortions of our other, of our other work, and the potential benefits are significant enough, even though they are, you know, frankly, very unlikely, but the chance that if they were to occur, the benefit is so large, that it is worth pursuing. Our competition, frankly, is not Elk Grove, our competition is Portland, Austin, you know, those other cities that are, that have resources to bring to bear, already have initiatives in this realm with money behind them, with major companies that are going to back it up. I mean, they've got, they have a lot more in their quiver. Elk Grove is, I mean, if it's us versus Elk Grove, I like those odds. But we've got, we do have some stiff competition all across the country, but this is definitely a step that we can take, and, you know, we will, this is only round one, right? So that once we go through this process, then Google will determine and announce, you know, who the finalists, or the semifinalists, or the quarterfinalists, we don't know actually how many steps this process is going to take, but they will narrow the field, and at that stage, we'll know, if we make that first cut, that we're really in the hunt, and we can, we can push even, even harder. But I do think the statements I've made about the outreach are really important, because all that we know about our community, and even if we put it in writing on the Google application, it's going to be very hard to stand out. And so, you know, the good works of the Facebook group, and the community members that have been meeting in person, and the Broderick and Bright group, are really important, but we need ideas and actions that will pop, or things that are so creative, that like renaming your city, Google gets on CNN, and gets the attention of Google in a way that Google says, okay, if we go there, that might be a place that will get us, you know, will get us some attention from the Federal Communications Commission, because these people are crazy, and they will do something wild, right? So it is that sort of thing, and that's why even Google says, you know, as opposed to just sending us, you know, the, filling out the form, send us a YouTube video, right? Do something interesting, do something creative, and then don't just send it in, you know, send it to the local, send it to the B, you know, if you've come up with a creative idea, so it gets more media exposure. That's really going to be the key strategy here, it's not just numbers of people, it is how creative and interesting and distinctive and unique we make West Sacramento through the whole competitive process. So this is a key start, obviously, we can't do this without us hitting the send button on a city application, so this is a really important action this evening. But if we're going to be successful, it's going to take all of the work that's already been done by community members and others, and a lot of creative, out-of-the-box thinking and action in order to really succeed in what's going to be a highly competitive process.
All right. Any other questions or discussion on item four? All right, then, is there a motion?
Second.
By Mr. Johansson, and second by Mr. Kristoff. So no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or none, that motion carries.
Maybe you could borrow a gun, give them a levy or something.
A gun is not the answer to everything, Mr. Kristoff.
Picture of it, send it on your American.
Okay. All right, so thanks, item four, a lot of folks, this was their first council meeting, first West Sacramento council meeting, and so welcome, and for you returned customers, welcome back, but we appreciate the community work. A lot of folks came together to work on this project before we could even decide whether we could do an application, because this did take a little bit of staff analysis, but a lot of work's already gone into this by a lot of community members, and it's very much appreciated. Right, item eleven is continuation of public hearing and consideration of Resolution ten dash fifteen and Resolution of Vacation of Public Right-of-Way Easement adjacent to Tower Bridge Gateway. The city manager has requested that we continue that public hearing to April seventh, so without objection, that will be the order. Item twelve is presentation and discussion of ordinance ten dash seven regarding proposed amendments to the West Sacramento zoning ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Baldwin, and members of the city council. The purpose of this workshop is to introduce proposed changes to the zoning ordinance involving signs and commercial coaches. The planning commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed amendments on February eighteenth, and recommended approval of the proposed conditions. The first round of changes involves Chapter seventeen thirty-three, which regulates onsite signs, and if you can remember, recall, the city council adopted a comprehensive update to the sign ordinance late last year. The sign ordinance does not allow business signs in the public right-of-way. The changes that are being proposed will allow signs in the public right-of-way, where ten feet or more of right-of-way exist behind the back of an existing sidewalk, or behind the curb where there is no sidewalk. The sign would be subject to a written agreement executed between the sign owner and the city. The second round of changes involves Chapter seventeen thirty-nine, which regulates off-site weekend directional signs. Chapter seventeen thirty-nine was adopted in two thousand eight to be consistent with Civil Code seven thirteen, which requires cities to permit property owners to have off-site signs advertising real property that is available for sale, lease, or exchange. The changes that are being proposed will allow additional off-site signs, in addition to the weekend directional signs. And in addition, a minor change to the weekend directional sign regulations are being proposed that would prohibit weekend directional signs on city-owned properties. The last round of changes involves commercial coaches. Last year, the city council adopted an amendment to the zoning ordinance that allows commercial coaches or modular buildings to be used as offices in the M-three zone for an initial three-year period. The council directed staff to develop standards for extending the use of the structures beyond the initial three-year timeframe, and also develop language that would apply to structures in the M-two zone as well. Lastly, as I mentioned in the staff report, the zoning ordinance currently allows commercial coaches in a M-two zone with a conditional use permit for one year. Under these provisions, the commercial coach can be used for office uses or non-office uses, and since these regulations are updated, staff thought this would be a good opportunity to update the existing regulations. This concludes staff's presentation. The proposed amendments are scheduled for a public hearing before the city council on April fourteenth.
Mr. Johansson?
Yes, Sandra, the-
Yes, Sandra, the, there's a couple of issues that, on this, the proposal, that deal with existing home sales. And in my line of work, I see a lot of folks that have to get rid of their homes. And they're either short sold, they've gotten disposed of them. So this is a question of for-sale signs for residential signs. It's been pointed out to me that there's a couple of things in here that are, that really aren't that good for the realtors that are working in this business. For example, having residential signs only available to go out on the weekends, what happens during the week is they have what's called broker days. And so the brokers basically will come during the week and they'll need directional signs to these places, just like anybody else. So, and that's not going to be allowed here. The other is, on the 500-foot limit, do you know what the width of our typical subdivision block is?
No, I don't. But if you think of within one mile, with a one mile, you can get 10 signs, 10 directional signs.
Yeah. Because if it's less than 500 feet, then you potentially could not have a sign in that neighborhood. If they've got to be within 500 feet of each other. So I guess, you know, my point is that I don't know if there's really any urgency to this, but what I would like to see happen is to talk to the real estate community about, yeah, my understanding is, is these are issues that can be dealt with informally and they come back with maybe a little more, you know, an ordinance that really won't hinder their efforts to sell property here.
Any other comments? I mean, not tonight. Okay. We do have one request to speak on this item. Public hearing will be at a later date, and that's by Dan Ramos from the Chamber of Commerce Public Affairs Committee.
Good evening, Mayor Cabaldin, members of the city council. I'm Dan Ramos, representing the Chamber of Public Affairs Committee. And my comments can be very brief, and I want to thank Sandra and the planning staff. We've been working collaboratively on these zoning ordinance issues. We really appreciate the city's allowing us the opportunity to weigh in and, you know, give our comments and stuff, and it's been a good collaborative process. We're, we're in agreement with all the changes here tonight. And the only question I have is, and this might be clarified by staff, is that in, we do really appreciate the ability to have the M2 be like M3, have some flexibility. It could help us in obtaining more tenants and getting more users to this community in those particular areas, especially in these tough times. It does talk about what, you know, if you have a commercial coach in the M2 or M3, there's required screening, either fence, landscape, whatever like that, then we turn right around and require, you know, once you get it out behind the building, behind screening, out of public view from any street, you know, we have, I think it allows us, you have to have the skirting around the trailer, too. If that's what we want, it's fine. It's just an added expense. No one's really going to see it except the user. It should be their preference, they want us to put skirting around the trailer or not. But that's, that's for you guys to determine. We're, we're ready to go ahead, and thank you very much for letting us have you put. Thank you.
All right, that's the only request? Any other comments, council discussion?
I just thought, quite frankly, I thought the planning commission did a outstanding job as far as sorting through all the issues, because some of them were contentious. I mean, and some of them have been going on for a long, long time. So I thought they really did a good job.
Mr. Mayor.
I agree. And I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, actually, with the real estate pieces. I mean, there, I, there is a cost in a neighborhood to, to too much signage, right? And I mean, any, any of us that, if you drive into a neighborhood and all you see in every possible viewpoint is for-sale, 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 open house, for-sale, it's, it does draw down the value of the neighborhood, including the folks who are trying to sell their homes. And so there is a, there is a legitimate public interest in not having too much signage. And so, you know, making sure folks can get to where they need to go, I think is important. We, I mean, I understand the issues that the Sacramento Association of Realtors and their 6,000 members have raised, about hundreds of vehicles combing the neighborhoods looking for open houses. I have not seen that in our community. Gotten far fewer complaints about people in the city driving around neighborhoods, who cannot find an open house that they're looking for, as opposed to complaints that I've gotten from residents who are upset with signage being everywhere on their, on their block and on their corners. And so, you know, we don't get into this level of detail here, but I think the planning commission did do a good job of sorting through exactly those kinds of issues. And whether, you know, if we'd spent seven hours on it, I would have reached, I would have said 500 feet or 580 feet, who knows? But I think the commission, you know, has done a good job of trying to wade through some, some tough choices. And so, I mean, I think it's, it's a good, it's a good initial proposal to bring forward to public hearing. Mr. Beers?
Yeah, you know, I, I'm fine with all of those provisions. I guess I'm curious about the enforcement. How do you really make the, you know, we can, we can put it in writing, but how do you actually make this, this work is, is kind of the bigger question, so. I don't know if that's appropriate for resolution in the zoning ordinance, but it should be a consideration.
Yeah.
Having something on paper doesn't solve the problem sometimes.
We would, we would rely on code enforcement. And I believe that since we adopted the off-site sign regulations, I think they've been pretty, pretty adamant in enforcing it.
That's good.
All right, but having, having enforceable laws is important.
Well, I think one of the things that'll happen is if code enforcement sees a violation and for whatever reason they decide to tick it or give a citation, that's going to send a very powerful message very soon. And so, you know, I mean, I think that that's...
Which is the, which is the first sign that, you know, if there's two signs there, who is there at 8:00 and who is there at 8:15?
All depends. But that's, I think, the only way you're really going to be able to do it.
Mayor Cabaldin, can I get clarification? I know Mrs. Jen Hansen had, had some concerns about the, the realtors and having some signs for the brokers. Is this something that you, you want to see come back on April 14th or for us to follow up at a later date with the...
Oh, I don't have a problem with the, you know, having a discussion with them.
Okay.
I'm just, I just, I don't want, I didn't want to leave the impression that we, that necessarily all five of us were saying, drop those provisions.
Okay, okay.
Because I'm not, I'm not, I'm not there on that.
Okay, all righty. Thank you.
And it's all, let me, can I get a clarification? Because, I don't know, I'm going to call them out, but Regatta, every single weekend, as soon as you all turn off the lights at City Hall and don't see anymore, trucks out a trailer to our property on Tower Bridge Gateway that's, you know, one of these foreclosure homes and it's gigantic and whatever. That is not legal. Is it to be putting signage, trailer signage on our, on municipally-owned property? Is that correct?
That is illegal. That's why we're recommending changes to say that, right now, you can't have off-site signs in the public right-of-way. Including a change that would say you cannot have off-site signs on city-owned property as well.
Okay.
So we just want to make sure that, that's, that is illegal.
And enforce it.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, okay. All right, anything further on this item? It's a workshop only, so it'll return on April 14th. Okay, item 13 is presentation and discussion of green building standards and sustainable strategies.
It is with great pleasure, and I think appropriate on St. Patrick's Day, that we are presenting, that staff is presenting work to date on green building standards and sustainable strategies. I would like to acknowledge the commissions, the chamber, and the architects, contractors, and professional organizations, and the green team, whom over the past year have worked diligently to bring this to council. The 2009 council strategic plan established as a top priority, a green strategy. This council priority places West Sacramento as a regional leader in sustainable development while attracting green business and constructing a healthy community. Tonight, staff is looking for direction from council on how to proceed with implementation of either the green building ordinance, the 2008 state green building standards, or Cal Green, as it's called, or a combination of both the ordinance and the code. Through state legislation of Assembly Bill 32 and Senate Bill 375, the city of West Sacramento has been directed to reduce greenhouse gas emissions to 1990 levels by 2020. The city's green team has focused on integration of new standards in multiple arenas to accomplish this goal. Establishing a green and sustainable regulatory framework for new construction is a significant step towards this goal. The city's green team is a multidisciplinary, multi-departmental team representing public works, community development, and the finance departments. The green building ordinance is the compilation of staff research derived from other cities' green ordinances, including those ordinances from the cities of Roner Park, Richmond, San Francisco, Cotati, and Davis. There's been significant community outreach. Multiple drafts of the green building ordinance were presented to the West Sacramento Chamber, the Sacramento Builders Exchange, the North State Building Industry Association, as well as to local builders and architects. The green building ordinance has been vetted with the Housing Advisory, Economic Development, and Planning Commissions. In June of last year, staff conducted a green building seminar, which was attended by over 100 participants. A summary of the comments from these outreach efforts is included in the agenda packet. If adopted, the green building ordinance will regulate new residential, commercial, industrial, multifamily, and mixed-use construction. The ordinance is based on a compliance matrix using U.S. Green Building Council and LEED or Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design Guidelines for new commercial construction and BIG or Build It Green Guidelines for residential construction. Using the green ordinance, an applicant will use checklists associated with the appropriate rating system for the project. The checklist or matrix will be submitted at plan check along with construction documents. An applicant will not be required to obtain certification from any private rating system. The checklist will be reviewed by planning and building department staff to ensure compliance with the green building ordinance. While the green building ordinance was in development, the state developed and adopted a green building standards code, again, Cal Green, that complements and is integrated into the existing suite of building codes under Title 24. Cal Green, as it is currently adopted, is a voluntary set of regulations for new buildings, new state buildings, schools, and hospitals. The appendices for the 2008 Cal Green, in 2008 Cal Green, contain voluntary measures that may be adopted as mandatory by local agencies based on climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. The new Cal Green 2010 standards will be adopted by the state during the next code cycle and update in January of 2011. There will be a six-month review and adoption period for local agencies. The 2010 Cal Green will contain regulatory oversight and mandatory measures for new commercial construction as well as low-rise residential. If adopted by the city of West Sacramento, the 2010 Cal Green code can be in place by July of 2011. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take questions, and thank you.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, thanks, Randy. The, you had mentioned that the Cal Green voluntary, well, there's two components, there's voluntary, then there's mandatory, that the local jurisdictions can take over. And you were saying that the mandatory is based on climatic, geographic, or topographical differences, which would be the reason to deviate, to, for example, have a mandatory scheme?
The, the Building Standards Commission has established parameters for local jurisdictions' adoption of code that is beyond the triennial update. And the voluntary standards in Cal Green would fit in, into those parameters and would need to be adopted based on those conditions.
Great. Now, one, in the report, there's a matrix here on the difference between Cal Green and the green building ordinance. I mean, the green building ordinance is clearly more expensive, but I'm, it's hard to quantify in your report, you know, what that means in terms of a percentage cost increase of a particular building under the Cal Green versus the proposed ordinance. Do you have a feeling on a percentage that we're talking about there?
Percentage Cal Green versus our green building ordinance?
Right.
There, there are estimates, and, and research shows that those estimates vary greatly. But other municipalities such as Roner Park have actual test examples. And in, in their experience, and this is discussed in the report, they estimate that an additional, I think it's $2 a square foot for residential and commercial is about 50 cents a square foot. And I think that would be appropriate to apply to our green ordinance as well.
What percentage addition would that mean?
Percentage addition...
On cost? Two, two, $2 a square foot? I mean, are we talking a 5% increase, 10% or 20% increase?
It, it depends on, on the cost of the home, but I'll, I'll just use a, $100 a square foot as a, as an easy metric, and, and that's a 2% addition. So if it was incrementally greater than that, then, you know, it would be, the percentage would be less. The Cal Green, there are metrics that are being put together, but the, I don't have any solid estimates or percentages at this point.
One of the, you know, when we're looking at ordinances like this that have the potential to be more expensive, then I think we need to look at why we're doing it. How is it in the best interest of either residents here or the businesses here or whatever? So what are the goals we're trying to reach if we deviate from Cal Green? Can you articulate exactly what we're trying to do then?
The...
To go above and beyond Cal Green? What, I mean, what is it going to do for us?
The, the goals, as discussed, are fall within some of the parameters of Assembly Bill 32 and Senate Bill 375, and attaining greenhouse gas emissions that met, were quantified as, as what we produced in 1990, as well as ideally encouraging green business and, and green growth in the community. You know, that's...
Yeah, I'm not, not really sure what, you know, what that go... So are you saying that if we didn't go above and beyond the Cal Green, that we would not be able to comply with state law?
No.
So we're, we're okay there?
We will, yes.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I think that's it for right now.
All right, we do have a couple of requests to speak on this item. The first is by Matt Hedges from the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange.
Happy St. Patrick's Day, Mayor Cabaldin and council members. My name is Matt Hedges. I'm the Public Affairs Director for the Sacramento Regional Builders Exchange. We're the largest association of builders in the state of California, representing over 3,000 builders in the region. We've been meeting with city staff over the past year or so. We want to thank Randy Goodwin and staff for their hard work on the item and the attention to our concerns. We also want to thank you, all of you council members, for your dedication to green building in the city. We agree with one of city staff's option, and options, and that is to support the Cal Green standards first tier. Doing so will allow builders to have an easy time integrating with other building codes throughout the state, as well as keeping the overall cost of doing business at a reasonable rate for the city. The worry we have with the original green buildings ordinance is not the goal it was attempting to attain, but... attempting to attain, but rather the cost associated with attaining that goal. West Sacramento is at a pivotal place right now. It is a prime place for quality development when the economy recovers. By creating green building standards that are more costly than the standards of other cities in the region, builders will think twice before building a project in West Sacramento, when they know that they can go places like Roseville, Elk Grove, and even Sacramento, and they can compete for projects for less money. When we did analysis of green building, we found that the cities with the greatest quantity of green building projects were the cities who took an incentivized approach, not a mandated approach. Forcing builders to comply with costly laws will turn, will in turn force them elsewhere, but when you encourage them to build, they stick around. If this council wants to go above and beyond the requirements described in Cal Green, we would urge you to do so with incentives, not mandates. Thank you for your time, and I hope you all have a very nice and safe evening. Thanks.
Dan Ramos, on behalf of the Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, I'm back again. Dan Ramos, I was like to wear my green today. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Anyway, just wanted to, here representing the Chamber of Commerce, Government Affairs, and like Matt, wanted to thank the staff, especially Randy, Charlene, and Denise Katko was involved in this in terms of kind of collaborating with us over this year. This thing's kind of evolved, and we're, we've learned a lot about green, and the chamber does support it, and we're very much behind this, and we, I think, I think Randy contested some of our efforts in doing research about the Green Building Ordinance and LEED certification, which is a voluntary thing, and we still appreciate green and think that should be something, I mean, the LEED system in terms of a, a, a building goes up and someone wants to get their building certified by a third party for LEED certification, that's just fine, but we really believe that the Cal Green way to go is the way to go. It's going to be easier for the city to administer, it's going to be easier for us to comprehend, it's part of the building process we all do right now. We would be very supportive if the city wanted to upfront, very quickly go ahead and adopt it now, ahead of the mandatory, so we can take some credit about being a green city out ahead. I don't believe there's a city in Northern California that's done it, I think it was Calabasas and somewhere else, so we'd be the first one in this area, kind of set a trend for at least our region of what's going on there. The only thing we ask is, we just need a little bit more fine tuning, and Randy's done a good job there. We went, made a few more discussions about that, how we go up that next level one or two, and kind of what portions of those might make some sense in integrating into the, the final ordinance we do. Also, I know right now the city's in the process of a new RFQ out, or RFP out, for plan check and building services inspections. You got that out, and it might be prudent for us to, as you're doing those interviews, whatever particular firms there is, get them involved in this process, see, and make that part of the criteria in terms of bringing on a inspection firm, it might be the current, but getting their input there, because this is going to rely a lot on their expertise in terms of inspections, inspectors, and it'd be good, I think, to have a little dialogue there, but we're willing to work forward and quickly come to a consensus in terms of adopting this early, ahead of time, and taking some credit and being green with you. So we're very much in favor of the Cal Green Building Ordinance. So that's what I wanted to say. Any questions?
All right, and, thank you. Brian Sainert.
Mayor and council members, my name's Brian Sainert. I'm a resident of the city of Sacramento. Thank you for hearing the public on this issue. I support your option, adoption of a Green Building Ordinance, and I feel that it should be looking to the future, as I know you do, when an energy and environmental concerns are going to be of even greater concern. I have helped support your efforts, just so you know a little bit about my background working with your folks. Invited to present to you, representing the U.S. Green Building Council, to review LEED requirements some time ago, and I assisted with your Green Building public seminar. There are some assumptions about the cost of green building in your staff report, and they're researched and footnoted, but I have substantial experience over the last 10 years actually certifying buildings, and there are many cases, demonstrated cases, that the cost of LEED certification and green building, if integrated early enough in the process, does not exceed the cost of what we might call a base building. There are times, though, when it does, and I think the, you know, 2%, 4% is a percentage that's bandied about. So the main point I want to make is that you consider the long-term environmental effects and, and in your decision, and even if there are some additional costs to your Green Building Ordinance, you know, to use the term penny-wise, pound-foolish, when we design buildings and build them, and they are not to the highest standards, then there's a need to retrofit them later. There's additional costs, particularly in your public building. So you build a 20,000, 25,000-square-foot community center, the energy systems, the glazing, the different materials maybe aren't selected to the best of their levels they could be, and there's a retrofit that has to take place later, which is then additional cost, if you will, for infrastructure. So I would just urge you to consider that as you are considering the adoption of this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, those are the only requests we have to speak, so we'll turn it to the council list, Mr. Goodwin. Hamilton, do you have any further verifications or comments in response to the comments made by the public?
I, I have no comments at this time.
All right. Let me, let me just say first, since I think I initiated this project, I don't know, two, three years ago, and the council did make it a top priority in the strategic plan for the reasons that Randy mentioned, that, that we had identified that we were going to be a city that was a leader on energy and environmental sustainability for a wide variety of reasons. One is that the impacts of, of poor environmental stewardship are more heavily felt here than elsewhere, that if we fail to deliver on issues around climate change in particular, that the effect on our water supply and, and particularly on flood protection is far more severe here than it is in many other places, even in California. But also, just as in purely economic matter, that we, we, in the region, and we locally in our, in our own comprehensive development strategy, and in the regional partnership prosperity strategy, has, have identified that clean energy and environmental, in the environmental sector generally, are the, are, depending on your source, the number one or number two prospect for new employment, for new investment, for new economic development in this, in the region and in the city. And that for us to succeed in those economic development efforts requires our traditional economic development strategies, but also requires a brand, that, that companies that are major players or major startups in the environmental sector want to be in communities that are, that are seen as the, as centers of green everything, green workers, green workforce, green culture, green everything. And that this was, this was essential to our strategy to be competitive in that arena, because it's not one that we have been in the past. And, and so part of the suite of work that we're doing at the port and in the industrial portion of the city to become a leader in that clean energy sector, which thanks to the investments at the federal level, is panning out as being the most opportune area for economic development, was dependent on us branding ourselves as a, as a leader. And I'm, I'm stressing the word leader because the Cal Green proposal is for us to lead by going 45 days ahead of some other city. It's not, it's not substantive leadership. And, and, and that is the key reason, and it's one of the key reasons why the Green Building Ordinance was in development, was to be able to announce to the world, sort of like the Google Fiber Option, but on a much lower scale, that West Sacramento is a center of, of the green economy going forward, and that if you're, if you're a young college graduate, you know, emerging in that field, or manufacturing worker in that field, this is a good place to locate. If you want to start a business, this is a good place to locate, if you start a little research outfit, this is a good place to locate. And so that's, that was a major driver behind moving forward with, with the Green Building Ordinance. I, I'm not, I mean, I'm not convinced on the green, on the Cal Green. I think Cal Green is a major advance for California. I think the governor's work and the Building Standards Commission work to develop a statewide green building code is, is, is admirable. They did a good job, you know, on eight, on 90% of it, and it represents a big leap forward in terms of green building on a statewide, on a statewide basis. There, it's not necessarily equivalent to what, to what would have been, or what would be achieved in our Green Building Ordinance. There's a lot of debate about this, about, you know, how much of Cal Green is like LEED or Build It Green and, and, and not, and, and, you know, both, both, you know, LEED will say it's not anywhere close, and the Cal Green folks say it's exactly the same. And, you know, if you put the stuff side by side, you really can't tell exactly, but Cal Green, with all the voluntary measures required, is actually not that different from, from LEED on a substantive basis. Cal Green without those voluntary measures, Cal Green just the, the minimum standard that would be required under the state, the state requirements is substantially lower in terms of its performance outcomes for, for environmental and energy usage. And, and so in, in that respect, I think it's not, it's, it's, it could be stronger, but the state obviously had to figure out what's the lowest common denominator that we can, that we can achieve for every single community in all of California. The state wasn't saying, for those communities that want to be leaders in environmental sustainability and energy conservation, what should be the standard? No, the state was saying, for every city in California, whether or not they're interested in that, what should be the, what should be the bottom line? So, so I'm interested in, in still proceeding. I, my, my personal preference is still the Green Board, Building Ordinance approach, but I'm not wedded, it's not religious to me. I mean, I'm going to, I'm not a member of the LEED board, I don't own stock in LEED, which is like a nonprofit anyway. It's really about the substantive outcome and our ability to use this as a, as leveraging on a brand for West Sacramento as a leader. And so for me, the, the Cal Green approach only makes sense if it's essentially the top-tier performance standard. So that, you know, we're, so we're still able to say, we, West Sacramento is distinctive, we are better than a lot of these other cities. The costs really aren't, I mean, they're, they're, 2% to 4% is not, is not nothing, it's not huge, but it's the same for both, right? The Cal Green folks say the standards are the same, right? What we're, what we're, what we are achieving in terms of reductions in water conservation, I mean, improvements in water conservation, reductions in energy shoes, usage are the same. So it's, and even in the staff report, it doesn't say that LEED costs $2 to $2 to $4 more per square foot, and Cal Green costs nothing. They're both, I mean, they're both, according to their own pronouncements, are roughly equivalent in, on, on the cost sector. The one difference is LEED certification, which has been sort of an ongoing, sort of sore thumb for us, which is, you know, how do we deal with that part of the cost structure? But that's not the four, that's not the 2% to 4%. The 2% to 4% includes that certification cost, but it also includes the actual changes in design and fixtures and everything else that you need in order to achieve those, those, those performance standards. So I'd, I'd be, and, and actually, and the charts that are in the staff report don't actually ever address the issue of performance, right? They're, they, they get at the issue around, you know, the transactional nature of one versus the other, but not so much around which is actually going to perform better on, on an environmental basis. And to me, that's, that's not a trivial part of the decision. It's, it is, it is key. So if they're equivalent, which I think means at, at least most of the top tier of Cal Green, if not all of it, then the cost issues are the, to me, they're the tiebreaker, and, and it would make sense to do a Cal Green approach potentially, but not the Cal Green baseline versus, versus a Green Building Ordinance. To me, that's, that's, there's no, there's no comparison there. And we've talked about dealing with the financial issues when we took up the impact fees, and we still have that option, right? We, you know, we reserve the option when we did the impact fee reductions at our last meeting, because we really only use the, the, the capacity in our building fee revenues for calendar year 2010, and only for certain projects. We have the capacity in the longer run to, to help offset, if it is 2%, we can partially offset that with a, with a, with a, you know, a change in our building fees for projects that are meeting those, that are meeting those standards, or for all projects. Well, if we required everybody to meet it, and we cut their impact fees by 15%, then a 2% change on the environmental side becomes less of a factor in terms of, of those issues. I hope we learned during the last, during our big growth spurt, that racing to the bottom, trying to figure out how can we be cheaper than Roseville and, and Davis and Sacramento isn't a good strategy. I mean, they don't do that. That, you know, Roseville, I think, has a affirmative policy of saying, how can we be the most expensive place to build anything? And Davis certainly does. And they have, and it's one of the reasons why they are successful. I mean, I'm not advocating that we do that, I'm just advocating that the opposite strategy, there's no, there's no examples of cities in the region that have achieved sustainable, meaningful prosperity by trying to be the, the absolutely cheapest at everything in order to attract development. They attract people and businesses because they're good places to work and to live, not because they're, they're slightly cheaper at the front in terms, in terms of, in terms of the construction. And, and we are seeing private sector response to this already. I mean, we, we spent a lot of time on the, on the Bridge District, which is going to be, you know, the entire district is going to be LEED ND, the entire district, that's where most of our invest, our public investment's going to be over the next generation and a substantial amount of private investment, in terms of the LEED, LEED ND designation. So on the, on the private side, we're already seeing that, certainly on the public sector side, everything that we've done in, in the library meeting effectively LEED standards and STIRS and all of our buildings, we are headed in that, in that direction, because it's the right thing to do. So I think that overall approach makes sense, we ought to be paying attention to, to costs, but if we're going to look at Cal Green, I think we need to be looking at Cal Green, at the, at the, at the strong Cal Green and not the, and not the, the, the baseline lowest common denominator version of Cal Green as, as going forward basis. Now, this, we, we obviously don't have this up for action tonight, you know, unless we decide tonight, we're just going to drop the entire conversation, not do it again. I would suggest to go to the Natural Resources Commission, which is, I know you took it to several commissions, but that's the commission that has responsibility for energy and environmental policy in the city, so it seems like they ought to see the, the, the Green Building Ordinance in addition to the commissions that you've already, that you've already visited with. Okay, Mayor Potamiegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Randy, and to pick up on where the mayor left off, in terms of the, the comments that you received back, it sounds like, at least the way you characterize it in your staff report, the Building Exchange, the BIA, and the other, I think it was EDAC and the HAC, they all had similar comments. Were they all based on just generally concerned about implementing something that would have potentially cost more? I mean, is that the essence of their comments?
If, if I can generalize, the, the comments were directed towards rolling out additional requirements in tough economic times, and the commissions were concerned about additional costs to not only single, single builders or a builder that would build a private home, but large developments. We also got feedback with that concern that they, that each commission was excited about the endeavor and, and moving ahead with a Green Ordinance or a Green Initiative of some type.
Okay, well, that's helpful. I think, you know, part of what this, it's perfect timing in terms of the conversation that we had just last week relative to the reduction of fees, and I think the mayor's point of what we're trying to promote, with the image that we're trying to represent, and what we're trying to attract in terms of the professional progressive development needs to coincide with everything else that we're doing, so I mean, we're not just doing this in isolation. This is one of many things that we're doing, I think, in our community to try to promote or try to attract the kinds of builders that we want in our community. I think the, the partial offset concept makes perfectly good sense. I'd love to hear more about the incentives. I mean, I heard the incentives presented this evening by the Builders Exchange representative, but I don't know what those incentives are, so presumably there is something out there that we can do to create a better environment with which folks would want to build according to higher standards, that, rather than just simply relying on some basic standards that are, that are laid out. I'm not opposed to continuing dialogue about what needs to happen or to make sense to help make our proposed standards more compatible with business. I'm not opposed to that, I don't know what that ultimately ends up in, but I certainly don't want to see what I think is a good product watered too much further down to, to make it ineffective.
Mr. Johansson.
Yeah, just maybe a couple more comments as, as you work on this until it comes up next. You know, I think West Sacramento is, is taking the lead on green in terms of what it's doing at the port, in a number, number of different avenues, what it's done in the Bridge District in, in terms of the neighborhood development we're doing there. But one of the issues that we've talked about a number of times at council has been just the economic environment that we're in now. It's, it's, it's not so much a race to the bottom, it's just being in the ballpark and being competitive. And I, I haven't really heard tonight any reason, any goal of why we should exceed the Cal Green, adopting that versus any incremental ordinance that, that basically, you know, that, that would offset the detriment of having an increased cost. And I'm not really, I'm not convinced that it's a 2% to 4% increase, I think it's more like 10% or 15%, from what I understand, and it's an expensive proposition. We just got through reducing fees by 22%, 20% and 22% in order to be more competitive, and it just doesn't make sense to raise us back up again with this type of standard. And, and I just, I just think there's a misconception about what drives business to a city. I don't think a, a company is going to build a building in West Sacramento because we have a Green Ordinance that's more expensive to build here. I just don't see that happening. I, I think, you know, the employees may want to come here because there's, there's, you know, a business here, but, you know, you've got, you've got to find a way to attract the business to come business to come here to begin with. And, and I think, really, the way business looks at this, it's, how cheap can we make it based on the regulatory scheme and complying with the regulatory scheme? And what is the permitting process, what is the time limit? And what is the regulatory scheme behind that? I mean, they don't, businesses aren't, their purpose isn't to provide a social service. And so I think that's really kind of, kind of what's at issue here. The, the other issue is that CalGreen is statewide, so we're looking at a more level playing field as far as standards. It could be implemented by the Building Department, it doesn't take a private sector or private certification to deal with it. So, it's a lot simpler to implement. And I'm just really concerned because we haven't really, we don't really know what the cost of this is going to be. We're saying that, yeah, we're going to be able to attract a green builder. Well, we don't know that, you know, and it's, it, it's going to be too bad if we create a scheme that just, it's going to shut us out. And we're not going to know, because we're not going to know if a business decides to bypass West Sacramento, we're just not going to get the business. So, you know, I think a better approach here that would still maintain us as a leader in green would be to adopt the green code, the state green code, and do that immediately, and then look how that progresses over the next year or so, and then maybe take a look at this again. Because, you know, I don't think there's going to be a rush to build in the next six months or a year. I know there's projects moving on, and, you know, if we don't happen to capture those projects under a more elaborate green scheme, well, we still have the public sector we can deal with, because the public sector, I think, is, is a completely different deal that, that we can do LEED and do whatever we need, for example, with STIRS building. But the private sector, it's really cost-driven, and a 10 or 15 percent increase in cost is just not, calling their project green is not really going to justify that additional cost. I, I just don't buy that. And, but I think, I think we still can approach it from a green perspective by adopting, you know, being a little more progressive and adopting a green ordinance based on the state standard.
Let me just be clear, there's no credible study that has said that a 10 to 15 percent order of magnitude is what's involved here, especially if what we're doing is comparing a proposed green building ordinance to CalGreen, which CalGreen says, everything in CalGreen is the same as in LEED substantively. So, the fact that Santa Rosa doesn't have CalGreen, so can't give us cost estimates, doesn't mean that CalGreen is free, it just means we don't know yet, nobody's able to project. So we have slightly more information about LEED costs than we do about CalGreen, but CalGreen claims that it's the same substantive standards. So, it, it just, there's, the, the cost issues, I think, are, you know, the certification one, which I think, you know, is a, is a, is problematic, but it's not, it's not, that's not even two percent, much less 15 percent of most building costs. And we, and the more, more folks that are doing it, the more LEED certifiers, the more trained folks there will be to, to help make that process faster and cheaper. If the only thing business cared about when locating was the, the cost of fees and the regulatory environment, there wouldn't be any businesses here, they would all be in Arkansas and other states. California is the, one of the most expensive places to do business and the most tightly regulated. And even in our region, there would be no businesses in Davis, and there would be no, which amazingly there are, and there would be no businesses in Roseville, which is the most expensive city in the region to do business. So it's not an argument that high cost makes, makes it better, only that it actually does matter. If people want to come here because it's green, that is, employers and businesses are more interested in can they get talented, creative, high-energy, reliable, loyal workers than they are in a one or two percent change in the, in the, in the cost of construction? So I, I, we're talking about a list that we just don't know about, because this, a lot of this information doesn't, doesn't exist at this stage. But for me personally, I just, I think that CalGreen lowest common denominator just doesn't, doesn't advance our objectives. And so I, I'm not, I, I want to repeat, I'm open to CalGreen, but I just think it needs to be the CalGreen that is, that is, that is more in the realm of what we've articulated as our objectives in terms of the substantive standards. Mr. Beers?
Yeah. I think we're, we're actually kind of caught up here in, in a situation where we just don't have enough information to really make an informed decision between these options, because if people can throw out 10, 15, 1, 2, it, it really is, it makes it difficult. But what we haven't talked about, and what, what bothers me, at least in terms of, of the analysis, is there is information in the staff report about the effects of construction costs. And so there, there's a talk of eight to nine percent decrease in operating costs, a building value increase of seven and a half percent, a 6.6 percent increase on return in investment, a 3.5 percent increase in occupancy, 3 percent increase in rent. Those are, those are important numbers that, that if we don't count those, if we just look at the front end and don't look at what a pro forma would really require us to look at, then I don't think we're doing ourselves any, it's, it's a partial analysis, it doesn't include the whole ramifications, which is what we really want to. I mean, you know, we do want to know that, that we get something for this. And, and so it seemed to me that, that we should, and I throw this out just as a, maybe a starting conversation, that we really need like a pro forma analysis of what is a CalGreen baseline, what is a CalGreen that's supposedly top-notch, and what is our ordinance? What, what does this look like over one to five years or something, so that we can kind of have something that we're, we're looking at, the true outcome for this? And, and then people can, we can maybe make some sort of informed decision, but my, my heart is actually, you know, leaning way towards something that, that achieves a tangible outcome. My, my worry about CalGreen is that it's the lowest common denominator, it's, it's what they can get through the bureaucratic process as opposed to what's exactly the outcome. I mean, I would be surprised in the CalGreen whether they could articulate what, what they expect to see different in any quantitative term over any certain period of time. If they have that information, I'd like to see it. Otherwise, it's, the, the appeal that I would see from the building industry for, for a CalGreen approach is that builders do like certainty, they like to know that if they're building something in this community or this community, they, they understand it. And to the degree they understand it, that creates confidence and they can make some decisions. But that doesn't preclude something that has a base that's pretty well-understood, but then allows us to create a stronger outcome in terms of our, our objectives, if we can demonstrate that we achieve those. And, and so when we're having this discussion, but we're ignoring all of these factors I just listed off, to me, I just don't feel like we're getting the whole picture. That's what I'd like to see.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, I, I think I'm sort of headed down the same road Wes is in some respects, and that is, we don't have the data. I mean, we're talking, you know, I mean, this can't be so new, and to have our legislators pass some kind of a, a bill or whatever it is, and yet at the same time, there's no data available. I mean, somebody needs to set a, a baseline. Take a 2,100-square-foot home, single-family home, you know? If it's, if it is, if it is CalGreen at its lowest denominator, what's it do? What, does it save a gallon of water? Does it save a kilowatt of electricity or whatever it might be? Then take it to the next level, take it to the, the same size of home and take it to a higher level of CalGreen and say, okay, what does it do? And then analyze, what's the cost? Looking at CalGreen or, or even the ordinance, you know? And what are the difference in cost? I mean, if you're looking at two, three, four percent, if you're looking, that's substantial. I mean, that, that's a lot of money. You know, some people may not think it's a lot of money, but trust me, there's a lot of folks out there who think it's a lot of money. So, but I mean, I think that, and you could do the same with a commercial building. You could do the same with a 3,000-square-foot commercial building or a 5,000-square-foot commercial building. You could, you could apply those, whatever they are, the green standards, you could apply those to, you know, what's it going to do? And then, you know, what's it going to save? And then the council can make, we can make a determination then. I mean, if it's, if I can save 100 gallons of water and 50 kilowatts of power by doing something, then I can put a price tag on that, and I can say, hey, look, this is really truly worth something. So, but that's the kind of data that I need. I mean, I, I need some, you know, instead of just pulling stuff out of the air that, you know, this is going to be, this is what it's going to do, if we have some solid data that we can look at, well, then I think, excuse me, then I think that, you know, we're better off. And we can apply that to industrial buildings, you can apply, I mean, you can apply it to anything, I mean, we do it now, but just not under the green concept, so to speak. I mean, before they, before they build those commercial buildings or they build those industrial buildings, they know exactly what, you know, what's going to happen. They got a pipe that is so big, and they know exactly if you turn it on for so long, it's going to cost this much. We can do the same thing, I think, but, you know, what do I know?
Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, a, a couple things. And I, I concur with my fellow council members about the cost being unknown, it really, based on that, we really should be taking a slow, a slow look at this to see what we're doing, both in the long, short-term costs and long-term costs. Now, as far as the, there's a distinction here between operating costs and the construction costs. Seattle is, is one of the premier cities in green building, from what I understand, and they've got a comprehensive program on incentives, depending on the type of project. Now, these are incentives that are not necessarily from the city, but federal government incentives, from utility company incentives, that can all go toward, for example, energy efficiency, water efficiency. So, through incentives, you can get to the same place without mandating it at the building stage. So, when, when the staff does come back, I would suggest that they do look at Seattle's programs, and it's quite elaborate. They have a whole section on residential, on commercial, on industrial, you know, lighting, electricity use, water use, similar things that we're doing in Brighton-Broadrick on, on refurbishing homes, those types of things. So, there's a lot of other ways to achieve the goal of energy efficiency and reduction of water, rather than including it in a building standard. So I think that's, that's kind of the point that's being made, that if you mandate it, costs go up, the option is then to have enough incentives to allow people to do that. And I think with incentives, you'll get to the same place, you're just not requiring people to do it, you're not going to knock West Sacramento out of the market, competitive market.
All right? Do you have enough direction?
We have a lot of information, and I think what we were trying to achieve tonight was to kind of help narrow down our focus, because the amount of data and comparison that we'd be looking at is quite a lot. So I don't know, I mean, what I have in my notes is that, basically, we're going to come back with full comparisons between CalGreen at all tier levels versus our green building ordinance. And basically, pick a sample project from a single-family home, a sample project from a multi-family, a sample project from a commercial, a sample industrial, and do cost comparisons, performance comparisons across all of those. Is that what I'm hearing?
I, I mean, I think you're hearing the council's desired outcome in terms of information that's achievable, and, and although I'm not sure I share Mr. Kristof's optimism that the legislature never would have passed this without that information, or the Building Standards Commission. A lot of work has been done in terms of forecasting, there may not be, there's no hard evidence that looks backward at actual cases, but a lot of analysis has been done, a lot of it unfortunately by advocacy groups on both sides, but, you know, to the, to the extent that it's possible to find some of those, you know, simulations and stuff that have been done that, that, that would help.
Well, maybe Seattle would be a decent idea if they've had this in place for a while, and maybe they would know what it-
I have, I have everything on Seattle and Portland and San Diego, and so we can definitely pull it together. CalGreen, there is, like you said, information out there from the advocacy's, we can definitely bring that back, and additional information on incentives.
Charlie, I would just also, when you're coming up with these estimates, to make sure you check in with the development community as well. I know there's going to be positions on either side of this, but we just can't have one opinion as to what, we need to have, I'd like to see a range. You know, for example, if, if the development community says it's 15 percent and, you know, the LEED group says it's zero, you know, I'd like to be able to see where the difference is, because there's, there's got to be truth somewhere in there, there's got to be a reason for that spread. So that's what I'm interested in seeing. It's not, you know, throwing out numbers that, that are unsupportive, but I need to kind of see really, you know, what's behind these things.
Yeah, we can definitely bring that back. On the stakeholder group, we did have developers and architects that participated. And of those that participated with regard to the cost, they were split. So we had, yes, they were split. So there were stakeholders from development community that agreed that the costs were minimal increases, and then we had developers who were indicating more along the lines of the 10 to 15 percent. But it was kind of split 50/50.
But, but you know, that's, that's what, to me, the city staff needs to be the referee. I mean, you know, we know that people come into these conversations with, you know, biases or, or, you know, whatever causes them to do it. But I know also that we ask you folks all the time to, to validate pro formas on, on projects. And that's the analysis I want. I don't want their analysis, I want the information that we get, and then I want a pro forma quality analysis with the best assumptions that we can make, and then we move it forward. And there should be a range. I, you know, I don't think we'll come up the exact number, but, but my point is, is that we could, you know, do some sort of analysis where we took all of these numbers and came up with a median, that wouldn't be a good number. What, what I want is our, our review and our, our experience to tell us how this stuff looks, not just the pure construction, but what's, what's the, what are all these effects that we're, we're trying to buy? I mean, there's a lot of things that we've already put in place, as you point out in our staff report, that speak to opportunities for water, sewer, and storm drain reductions. Those are already operational, they're already in savings, we already know what, what we can do in those areas. We've also done stuff in the area of parking. So, so that's the kind of thing I'm looking for, is, is if we get a pro forma from somebody and we turn it over to staff, the product that comes back should be staff's recommendation on what they see. And, and that, I, I'm not interested actually in the splits on everyone else, I, I just want to see what some numbers are that we can then grab, grab onto.
Okay. That's as much direction as you're getting, so.
We'll, we'll work with that.
All right, thank you. All right, Council Calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as Mayor Portempiagas mentioned, tomorrow night is our fundraiser for the Upper West SAC program. And you mentioned earlier that you think employers look for talented, creative, and loyal workers, and, and we agree, and we think the best way to do that is to invest early in quality preschool. So we hope to see you all there at the fundraiser tomorrow. And then on Saturday, the BBCan group is going to be continuing their strategic planning retreat here in the Galleria. And then on Monday night, there'll be a family fun night at Riverbank Elementary School. And the Upper West SAC meeting on the 24th is being, has been canceled, and will be rescheduled in April sometime.
All right, any questions on the calendar? Seeing none. City manager report?
Nothing to see, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. City attorney report? Staff direction from members of the council? Just, actually, just wanted, because we had to Google up, you know, Google had just last, a week or two ago, launched bicycle route mapping as part of their service, and it doesn't cover us, or it covers like the Roland Hensley bike path and the stops at this gas station. I don't know if it's because we're a city of under 50,000 and Google is obsessed with that threshold, but I've had a couple, you know, inquiries about it, it shows the regional bike system, Davis, and then the city of Sacramento, and then there's this gigantic gap. So if we could get some information about whether or not, if we send them a GIS file, they could add us in, that would be great. Okay, any others? We have no future agenda item requests? Mr. Beers moves, and Mr. Johansson seconds that the meeting be adjourned? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, ringed none, motion carries, meeting is adjourned. Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.